Mr. Burquist.
Here.
Mr. Cozer.
Here.
Mr. Lewis will not be here tonight.
For the Pledge of Allegiance, I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. First order of business, approval of the minutes from the May 10th meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Special reports, seeing none, moving to audience comments.
I have one audience comment that was sent in by Bob Donan, 107 Southview Court. As someone who has navigated, and this is with reference to the Bevout East McMurray Intersection Improvement Project, as someone who has navigated this intersection with various vehicles over the past 41 years, here are my responses to your request for comments. In a nutshell, I would recommend that the intersection alternate one or in Bittersweet alternate three with two additions to the intersection alternate one, the addition of a right lane on Bevout so that there are three lanes headed west into the intersection, a left turn lane, a straight head lane, and a right turn lane. B, allow ingress only onto the BP Kogo driveway from Thompsonville Road. There are four major issues with the intersection right now. The majority of traffic from the Bevout Road right turn, so that the current practice is for cars to use the berm of the road, which is why a right turn lane is needed to alternate one. If you are proceeding north on East McMurray to make a left-hand turn on the Thompsonville Road, vehicles head south on East McMurray using the berm of the road to bypass vehicles waiting to turn left onto Bevout Road. A left-hand turn lane, especially for traffic headed south, should at least partially solve this problem, but turn lanes in both directions on East McMurray Road make the most sense, especially with the renewed activity at Almond Grove Park. Three, I've seen ongoing problems with vehicles egressing the BP Kogo onto Thompsonville Road, especially if they're turning left towards the intersection. Even vehicles egressing to the right or close to the intersection create another dangerous situation since there may be a utility pole or other issue making that a slow, tight turn when there are vehicles waiting at the traffic light. I would suggest making the exit at least no left hand, no left turn, and even further with entrance only. Four, if you are traveling east on Thompsonville Road to make the left turn on the East McMurray Road headed north, it can lead to a game of chicken with the fast-moving traffic from Bevout into the intersection with a bad hilltop sight line adding to that issue. Moving Bittersweet intersection further north on East McMurray Road, alternate three, makes the most sense, especially if there is a left turn lane onto Bittersweet from East McMurray for traffic headed south. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank Bob for those comments. I did look at a few of these, and I think we need to look it up. Okay.
Is there anyone else?
Anybody else comments?
Anybody else here?
Audience? Okay. New business, bids received for construction of the Rolling Hills Park Aquatic Center.
On Wednesday, May 12th, bids were open for the Rolling Hills Park Aquatic Center. There were five firms that were pre-qualified for the project, and all of those firms chose the bid. A tabulation of the bids is showing on the screen. Not included in this bid amount is the amount for earthmoving that is being done in conjunction with the Rolling Hills Phase One project. The value of that work is $691,625. So if you incorporate that number into the numbers that are provided, the total cost of the project becomes $12,173,529. This is an excess of what we had envisioned the cost of this project to be. In addition to that, Vincent Pools, who is the proposed pool subcontractor and who provided pricing to four of the five contractors, made a significant error in their cost calculation. And given the nature of that error, they are permitted under the Pennsylvania Public Contractors Bid Withdrawal Law to withdraw that bid. So what we've been doing with the assistance of the architect and the bidders are attempting to ascertain why the bids are so high, as well as trying to formulate a plan that would allow us to bring the project back in line with the original estimates. We've had conversations with the two low bidders. In addition, the design professional who designed actually the pool portion is having conversations with the subcontractors who actually would do the construction of the It's going to be my recommendation that council reject all bids for the Rolling Hills Park project. What I hope to be able to do at our next meeting is to give you a report on what we have found out in terms of the project and what it would take to bring the project back in line. The other thing is that we are continuing to pursue grant funding to substantially offset the construction costs. And at least in terms of the one, I would anticipate that by the end of June or the middle of July, we would have an idea of whether or not we would qualify for funding under the state's capital budget, so.
I move that we reject all the bids.
Second.
Any discussion in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
opposed? Okay.
Excuse me, may I ask one other question or make a comment? I know that it'll take staff time to figure out what you've just suggested, you know, why the bids are what they are, and to continue with the grants. You know, is there any, I feel that there might be some value in trying to figure out a way to survey the public again and really ask them what they want. I mean, I continue to hear a lot of negative response to the design that was finally presented with all of the, you know, slides and the rolling, running river and all that jazz. I just, I think that, you know, maybe we should ascertain, you know, go back and try to find a way to figure out what people really think about the whole project.
I would agree with Mrs. Merrill. I think that we should try to get a little bit more input from the public. And also, I think that doing that would educate the public a little bit further as to what exactly has been proposed. And I think that it would be time well spent, just because that's all I heard at the polls when I was in this past election. People asked me a lot of questions about that.
Is there any way we could have someone build a model of what's proposed and put it in the library, put it someplace in the public where people could go see it?
Yeah, but I think what I'm being told are two different things. What you're suggesting is looking at what's designed, what they're suggesting is going back out and surveying the community one more time to ask them, what are the elements that need to be, that should be included in an aquatic center?
I don't think it's a difference. I'm not sure if building a whole model is necessary, but I would advocate for putting a huge poster in the library so people could actually see it and figure out a way that people could make their comments. I mean, I would want people to, you know, make up their comments pro or con or against. You know, I'd like to know how many people like it, how many people don't, you know. And I think we need to tell them exactly what the expectations are going to be as far as cost and the geographic area we're targeting as a market. You know, I think people need to really have a clear idea. I know it's on the website, I know it is, but I think a lot of people still aren't quite getting the point.
And I think, quite honestly, we'll probably have to have another public hearing on this.
I gotta say, the one thing that you can do now is do that now.
Yeah, I think, I think that's the best idea because, again, the premise from our design team was that to make this project pay for itself, have operating net income is what their advice is. The more amenities you have, the more opportunity you'll have to attract people to use it, so.
So let me do this. Let me spend the next couple of weeks, because we've got three weeks, please, meetings, and come back to council, and we'll come up with a game plan about how to move forward.
I think also, just from hearing from council and from other people, is that there were some very specific questions asked at different points and at different people. Maybe if council would get those questions to Paul.
That would be helpful.
To include on the list, it would be helpful, so you could put together what, you know, questions you'd like to ask. Because I know there were a lot of comments. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next item is approval of Old Trail 12 easement vacation plan as shown on drawings prepared by Keystone Surveying and Mapping dated March 12th, 2021, vacating an unused easement for Old Trail 12.
So in the, in the Old Trail 12 plan, there was an easement in the back of the lots, and that easement really serves no purpose. So we had been approached to vacate the easement behind one of the homes to accommodate a swimming pool, but what Ed and I decided what made more sense is to rather deal with these on individual basis is to vacate the easement in its entirety, and that's what this, this plan does.
I'll move that we approve the Old Trail 12 easement vacation plan as shown on drawings prepared by Keystone Surveying and Mapping dated March 22nd, 2021.
Any discussion?
Just a clarifying question for people. So the easement, the people actually own the property, but it was an easement that the township owns, so it's not going to affect in any way their survey lines or anything of that nature?
Well, it does affect them only to the extent that by vacating it, an easement no longer shows on their survey, and that now becomes usable land where you can put a deck for a pool or whatever you would like to use.
Will it have an impact on the value of the property?
I don't think so.
No, I just.
No, I, no, I.
I mean, if it would, it would be an increase.
Yeah, but it would be so minimal that you wouldn't even know it.
Okay. Thank you.
Move the second in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Approval of the Venetia Point 2021 Final Plan is shown on drawings prepared by Cobalt Professional Services dated March 30th, 2021 for the Venetia Point Homeowners Association.
So this, this plan first came to council in 2007. The way this plan has been being developed is as they are prepared to construct another building, they are subdividing that section off and creating the lots upon which the townhouses will be built. So this plan, the Venetia Point 2021 Plan, creates three lots, lots 26, 27, and 28. What is remaining here is this other piece of property where we would anticipate that there may be as many as four additional townhouses.
And that'll be the last phase, then?
That's the last phase.
All right, I'll move that we approve the Venetia Point 2021 Final Plan as shown on drawings prepared by Cobalt Professional Services, Inc., dated March 30th, 2021 for the Venetia Point Homeowners Association, Inc.
Second.
Other discussion?
Just a clarifying question. I believe a while back we gave there was an extension allowed for development. Is there a time limit as to how long they have to have until they finish the whole plan?
There's not a specific time. They have five years of protection against changes to ordinances.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All righty. Purchase of a cargo van under the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Cooperative Purging Program, Co-Stars, for a Peters Township Community Television van.
So the Peters Township 2021 budget includes an appropriation of $40,000 for the purchase of a van for use by the Peters Township Community Television. This is replacing the box truck, the existing vehicle is 24 years old. What is being proposed is the purchase of a Ford Transit 250 cargo van for the amount of $32,780. There will be some outfitting of the vehicle, including decals, but it will be well below the amount that is wanted.
So moved.
In favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Now, one question, is it that color of the van, white?
Yes.
Okay.
It's only 24 years old, it probably has a few years.
We told Ryan he can get another one in 24 years.
Resolution authorizing the submission of a grant application to the Commonwealth Financing Authority Watershed Restoration and Protection Program.
So as council is aware, we have underdesigned a stream improvement project on the Brush Run Creek in accordance with our MS4 permit. This project is anticipated to cost as much as $737,000. There is an opportunity for a grant to help us offset the cost of the project from the state of Pennsylvania, and what we're asking for is approval of a resolution that authorizes submission of the grant application to the Commonwealth Financing Authority.
So moved.
Discussion.
I did have a question or two. In the body of this, they talked about potential cost sharing by municipalities working together, and they referenced Bethel Park. Is there a potential for that for us?
There is a potential for that. We actually had a very brief discussion with Bethel Park before we started this project. As this develops, we're gonna, we're gonna want to talk to Bethel Park because for them, it's a way, just as the case of Peters Township, they have a responsibility with regard to stream improvements, and this might be a way for them to get credit for something and us get some assistance in sharing the cost of the project.
And then a secondary question. We've spent money already to begin the project. Does it retroactively count as matching funds?
In this case, it doesn't matter because the, the maximum amount of the grant is $300,000, which is well below.
Thank you.
Cost of the project. Is there any other kind of grant, like from the feds or anything like that? That seems pretty light. I mean, they'll give you, you know, a lot of money for recreational stuff, but, you know, this is something that's important.
Yeah, well, and I can't, you know, the source of these funds actually comes from Marcellus Drilling revenues. I, I can't tell you why the grant is capped at that amount, but I don't know of any other sources of funds. You know, the one possibility would be, although I don't know how the county would react to it, is a local share account application.
Okay. Okay, any other questions? In favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Great. Resolution amending Peters Township Act 537 Sewage Facility Plan so as to redefine a portion of the sanitary sewer service in Upper St. Clair and Peters Township. This is interesting.
Yes, it's, and also complicated, and it's been in the works for probably a dozen What this project does is it allows sewage flows from Deerfield Manor to come to the Peters Township Sanitary Authority by gravity. And to be able to do that, there's a 70-foot extension of line that connects it back to, to the township's sewers. And that particular connection is actually there in place, and all it will take is the opening of a valve to allow that flow to occur. The reason why Upper St. Clair has pursued this is that that, that pump station has been inadequate to handle the flows from the 45 homes that it serves. What will occur is that in addition to that, there will be a connection made from Peters Township back to Upper St. Clair. What you're talking about there is simply 11 homes being serviced by St. Clair. The thing about this is that from the, from the sanitary authority's perspective, because their plant has excess capacity, and because Alka-Sand's plant has excess capacity, for either of them, the transfer of these ratepayers is deemed to be significant. That's why it took the signatures from Upper St. Clair, the city of Pittsburgh, Alka-Sand, a raft of agencies, because Alka-Sand doesn't like giving up ratepayers. So I think this is a sensible solution to help our neighbor with a problem they have with the pump station, and it will generate additional ratepayers for Peters Township.
What about them, like it says in here in your, in your report, that the Linkview Plan will continue to be billed for services by the Peter Santis Authority, that's the same rate, but then they're going to get billed by the Eliot County Sanitary Authority?
Yeah.
Okay.
So the way this.
So will, we, will, will the sanitary authority get billed more than what our residents are paying?
No. No, the rates actually will be lower in Alka-Sand.
So can we just give a lot of that?
This is exactly, this is exactly the same arrangement that exists in the Beacon Manor Plan right now, where that all drains to Alka-Sand. The ratepayers on those streets where it drains to Alka-Sand are billed by the Peters Township Sanitary Authority at the same rate everybody else in town is billed. And then Peters Township Sanitary Authority pays a bulk bill to Alka-Sand. So this, this will work exactly the same way.
So on the contrary, though, the new ratepayers from Upper St. Clair, will they pay the rate that Peters Township sanitary charges?
They will pay the same rate that, that the, because Upper St. Clair is going to do the same thing. Peters Township Sanitary Authority will send a bulk bill to Upper St. Clair so that it'll all be paid as one bill back to the sanitary authority. Their ratepayers will be billed by Upper St. Clair at the same rates that they would be.
Do all the ratepayers know about this, the people who are going to be affected by these changes?
Well, the fact is that, from a ratepayer standpoint, nobody is being affected. All it's, the only difference is where their service is being treated.
But they're going to complain to somebody if there's a problem, so I'm just asking, do they understand there's going to be a change?
I, I can't tell you whether or not people have been notified as to, as to this physical change in these lines, but from the, from a ratepayer standpoint, it's going to be invisible.
Okay. So they'll just go through whoever they pay and then.
Whoever they pay, yeah.
They'll fight it out.
Yeah.
So the project for $71,000, what is that about? You said this line already exists.
There'll be a force, this, this section of Peters Township is serviced with a forced main now. The difference will be that forced main will be rerouted, and the Peters Township Sanitary Authority is already in the process of notifying the property owners about acquiring the easements needed to establish.
So there won't be construction?
Yeah.
For those people?
Yeah.
As a matter of curiosity, you said there was already a pipe connecting the two.
Already a pipe connecting Upper St. Clair to Peters Township. I don't know when that was.
Why would they put that in?
What's that?
Why would they put that, what was that?
Well, because about 12 years ago, they began this process of making this connection. And originally, their hope was that this simply would be the project, and Alka-Sand balked at that because of the loss of the ratepayers.
Only 12 years to get it done, okay.
Yeah.
All right, so we need a, we need a resolution.
Yes, because what you're, what you're actually doing is amending Peters Township Act 537 Sewage Facility Plan.
All right, I move that we approve resolution number 050221, amending the Peters Township Act 537 Sewage Facility Plan so as to redefine a portion of the sanitary sewer service area in Upper St. Clair and Peters Township, which is consistent with our discussions here this evening.
Second.
Any other questions in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Authorize Peters Township Police Chief to execute on behalf of Peters Township a memorandum of understanding between Peters Township Police Department and Peters Township School District.
The Pennsylvania Safe School Act requires all Pennsylvania school districts to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the law enforcement agency that governs their working relationship. This is required to be revisited every two years, so you would have passed this in 2019. It is unchanged from, from that time, and it's my recommendation that you authorize Chief Grimes to enter into the agreement.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Approve proposed property tax assessment settlement for PCS Realty Corporation for property located at 110 Hidden Valley Road.
So the owners of the property located at 536 Valley Brook Road have sought a reassessment of their property. They currently, these properties are valued at $991,800. They had an appraisal done that asserted that the value of the property was really Susan Key, who represents the township, the county solicitor, and the assessment office believe that a stipulated value of $778,400 is a fair settlement. The property owners are apparently willing to enter into that agreement, and for the purposes of township taxes, that will result in a reduction of $408 annually.
Has the school district signed off on this?
The school district already has reviewed this and approved it.
All right, I'll move that we authorize Peacock Keller LLP to enter into a stipulation to settle LC Boutique versus Washington County Board of Assessment at all case number 2009-7301, 7302, and 7303, for $778,400.
Second. In favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Review the payroll bills.
Gentlemen, colleagues, I reviewed the payroll and bills. Payroll was $309,000. That's up about $8,000 because of a new hire in the librarian or part-timers for the rec center. Cots payable was $490,000, with the largest payment $71,000 for a bond, $63,000 for employee medical benefits, and our garbage, which runs about $174,000 each month. Credit card charges were $9,600. I move we approve these bills.
Second.
Favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, correspondence, there is none. Reports, anybody want to discuss any other reports?
Could I make a couple of comments?
Sure.
Planning has shared their numbers with us. We have six new private pool permits again this month. I would like to congratulate Parks and Rec on completing a lot of the ADA projects. We're very close to having everything done, and they've gotten kudos from DCED because of the aggressive way that we've done that, so I think it's positive for them.
And as part of that, the, the surface under the playground is, is, is either has been installed or will be installed very shortly, so it'll be ready to go.
Okay. May I ask one other thing about the financial report? I read an interesting article that talked about how the impact of people working remotely at home in their own community might affect local services taxes, and that was the point that Mr. Derosky put in his, he talked about local services taxes in his finance report, which again was very good. Do we have any idea about whether that's something we should be looking into or pursuing?
Well, actually, the Washington County Tax Collection Committee had its meeting on Friday, and we discussed that because the question really is at this point is how many of these people that are working from home are going to continue to do so. During the pandemic, the thought was that this was a temporary in nature, and therefore attempting to collect the local services tax from where people actually are working didn't make sense, but this is one we're going to go back and revisit because I think employers need to get educated as to what their responsibilities are, because if people continue to work from home, and normally if you work in a location for 90 days, that becomes your place of employment.
Right.
And that, that local services tax needs to be coming to Peters Township as opposed to the municipality where their business is located.
Given the residential nature of the township, that could potentially increase our LST revenue, do you think?
Oh, I think it could be significant.
Good. Well, let's be hopeful.
I had a question about the planning report. I see that the, the organic remedies, I guess they withdrew, so they're, what, they're not going to do that, or they're relocating, or?
Well, they're not going to pursue 110 West McMurray Road. The Tony Center, they may be pursuing another location within Peters.
That'd be fine, as long as the parking, the whole issue is parking.
Correct.
But then I noticed on here that there's a request on here, it was the last item, about. about they want a 22-foot variance to a required 30-foot front yard setback.
That was denied.
Uh, it was. I didn't see it on last meeting's report. Was it on there?
I think so.
Uh, it was?
It was in the Woodlands neighborhood. Someone built a shed, got a permit for it. The permit was issued for it to be in a specific location, and they did not put it in that location.
It was in the front.
It was in the front yard.
It was a corner property. It was a corner property.
It has two fronts.
It has to be.
Okay. Well, you know, now that you mention that, I do recall Mrs. Merrill saying something about that, so it must have, we must have talked about it. Thank you.
Any miscellaneous?
Two things. One, I want to bring counsel up to date on the American Rescue Plan Act. The township, it appears that we will be receiving in excess of $2 million over the next couple of years under the act. There are four broad categories in which those funds can be spent. We have until the end of 2024 to expend those funds. Quite honestly, from my perspective, the only one that makes any sense is the final one, which is an investment in public infrastructure, and it's, you know, for water or sanitary sewers or storm sewers. And what my intention was is to make discussion of that part of the budget discussions for 2022. You know, this money's coming to the township, not directly, it's coming to the township through the Commonwealth, and I, quite honestly, I don't know when exactly it will get here, and it would seem to me that we'll have plenty of time to be able to expend those funds in some meaningful way if we wait, so.
Anything else on this last?
Yes. A number of members of council were on the scoping meeting with Pendot regarding the intersection of East McMurray and Beebout and Thompsonville Road. They, there were three alternatives that were presented. The first alternative has turning lanes in each direction. The second does not have turning lanes on Thompsonville Road, and then, and finally, you have this one where there's turning lanes on both directions, on East McMurray Road and turning lanes on Beebout Road. Pendot is looking for some input from the municipality with regard to what we view to be the desired alternative. If you look at the analysis that they provided us, alternate two, you know, what you see in those boxes, those letters refer to how well the service is for each of the turning movements. And if you look at the no build versus alternate one, alternate two, alternate three, alternate two clearly has the best ratings for turns in all directions. So I don't know, to me, it seems obvious that what we ought to be doing is alternate two.
Can you elaborate a little bit for people who didn't know? They are proposing to restrict turning into the different areas and turning out of Murray Highlands and things of that nature. So that's part of the question about which is going to be the better resolution?
Well, that actually is a separate discussion, but related. You know, one of the problems is, anybody who goes through that intersection, you know that coming out of Bittersweet Circle or the BP station is a challenge. They offered four alternatives for addressing that challenge. And the first alternative would be to allow the current alignment, which would mean that there would only be right-hand turns in and right-hand turns out of Bittersweet Circle. There would be no left-hand turns into the BP station or the property, Mr. LaWaddy's property that is immediately adjacent to it. Alternate two proposes a cul-de-sac to be constructed, but if you were to construct that cul-de-sac, the effect would be to limit the people on Bittersweet Circle to one way in and one way out, and that certainly isn't in line with the township's policy for multiple forms of ingress and egress out of a plan. This alternative here is the one that I think is the most desirable, which is to take Bittersweet Circle and extend it north so that in fact it sits in a position past the turning lane so that you can do left-hand turns out of Bittersweet Circle and left-hand turns into Bittersweet Circle. The one thing that I think would make sense to do, and we'd have to talk to Pendot about this, I don't think there's any magic to how long that turning lane is right now. I don't think that's based upon any calculation. And what would make sense is if you could take this turning lane and line it up to the edge of this property and have it such that you can do left-hand turns in and out. The people who own the BP station right now, Cohen, wants to purchase this piece of property as well, and that would allow them to have left-hand turns in and out, which would mean that this would, that this may be a viable redevelopment of this property, and they're very interested in pursuing that, at that location.
Is that just a lot? Is that just a lot?
No.
Is that, is that that, is that-
That's that vacant lot that LaWaddy owns here. There was a plan to put a building back behind here.
Yeah, okay.
This would be, I think as a use, this would be a much better use than what they had intended. And then the-
What's the fourth alternative?
The fourth alternative doesn't really work because it takes the road down to Beebout Road, but what you're left there is, again, right turn in, right turn out. The only difference is it's on Beebout Road, which, if you're going to only have right turns in and out, you'd be better off with them on East McMurray, not there.
Why couldn't you just do two? That way, if you wanted to go left, you could just go that way, go up to the light and make a left, and if you wanted to go right, you'd just go up the existing road.
You mean alternate two?
I don't know. They'd have two access points, one on Beebout and one on McMurray.
But this could only be right in and right out.
It's still going to be the same predictable.
I don't know what this gains is.
Oh, I see what you mean. So you wouldn't be able to make a left?
You wouldn't be able to make a left, and this would be, this would be very challenging to do because there's a gas regulator or a gas substation or something in that location, so that would be a real challenge, that one. So.
Okay.
Well, that's on a proposal. What I said, so it doesn't matter, I guess.
So we need to send comments back to them?
Well, what I'd like to be able to do is to send back a comment from the official position of council, and I'm assuming that this is the preferred solution for Bittersweet. Is that correct?
I would think it is.
Oh, absolutely.
Otherwise, the people would have to-
You have to be able to make a left out of there.
And again, I'm assuming that of the solutions, what you'd want to do is the solution that gives you the best turning movements, which is this solution two.
We were on the call, Mr. Lewis was mentioning a roundabout, which-
Mr. Lewis went out and looked at that, I realized it.
I fell out of my chair.
He called up and apologized that he thought he was going to give us all a heart attack.
Seriously?
He went out and looked, and he understands why that isn't a solution here.
Well, and he also suggested a five-point intersection change in Bittersweet to come up into that to make it like five points, but again, it's all the equipment at that place.
Yeah.
So it's just, it's too much to deal with. So I would agree, have a listen to what they said, and alternate two seems to be the best choice for the roads, and then three for Bittersweet. Do you think?
Yeah, I think that makes sense.
Okay. Then I'll relate that to Pendot. I have a request that we had received in from the City Mission. City Mission is not a fundraiser, using our facilities in the past, you know, the trail for a run. In the past, they've had a local resident be able to fill out the application so that they actually get township rates to rent the facility. You're talking maybe $400, $450 for that. I guess my question is, does the council have a problem? They don't have a resident on that application right now. Does the problem have a problem making that facility available to them at the resident rate, or for that matter even, given it's a city mission? And I know how challenged they are for funds.
Where do they want to use it?
They want to, they have a, they have an event where it's a race, and it's run across our trail.
Oh, okay.
And so there's a rental fee for that. So I guess the question is, do you want to charge a resident rate? Do you want to make them pay the non-resident rate, or do you want to waive the rate?
I think they need to have residents sign off on it. Just get a resident. I tried to get a room for two, you know, to do mediation here, and I had to come down there and sign because I was the only resident, even though the two other parties are, you know, businesses in the community.
Does it have to be someone on their board who's a resident, or what is their criteria?
Well, I think it just needs to be somebody who's in a position to be able to sign for them, so I think a local resident could actually, you know, be the township sponsored that gets them that rate, so. I'll take, we'll work that out, we'll find.
25,000 people in the town. If they need someone, I'll do it.
Well, actually, I agree that we should let them have the resident rate. I don't know that giving it to them for nothing, I mean, that's kind of, we don't do that.
Well, the alternative, there's lots of good, people do lots of good things in town, and so it's hard to distinguish one from the other.
I just don't want to set a precedent that, you know, everybody's going to want the resident rate, and we mustn't have the rule anymore.
Okay.
There? Anyone else?
I had a question, whether or not you had had a chance to find out anything about the property at Maplewood across from Pelopet's Park.
I've identified the owner, we had a conversation with him. He wants to know specifically what we'd like to be able to do, and I think the answer to that is cut the trees down that are, that are probably sitting in the right way, and so I need to approach him with that.
Is that one on the corner there?
Yep.
Is Andre still on that?
No, it was sold to some group, some realty company.
Okay.
There anything else on this one?
Could I ask a question? Given that we opened up everything, is there any possibility we should think about trying to do fireworks this year? I mean, we can't, Community Day, I don't think we can-
Well, I'm thinking about that, too. And great minds think in the same pattern, because we actually pursued that. We cannot find someone to do them on the Fourth of July. It's too late for that.
Sure, sure.
But, you know, you tell me, does it make sense to do these when we would do Community Day? Because it seems like an odd day that you'd be setting off fireworks. If it isn't at the conclusion of an event, I don't know how that makes sense.
No, it's the weekend before the Fourth of July. Right, if we did them on the 26th of June, would be the Saturday before the Fourth of July, so it could be like pre-Fourth of July fireworks or something like that.
Maybe we could do them at the end of the season for the last concert, or I don't know.
You know what? See, something like that might make sense, to do them.
You know, including the-
I think you should shoot them off.
Due to July 7th, that's a Skyliners concert in the park.
You know what? You know what? See, to put them in conjunction with a concert might make sense. Let us pursue that. I mean, that would make it easier, quite frankly.
Especially with the Skyliners.
It's just-
Really?
Okay.
We'll pursue that.
Thank you.
Good idea. All right, next agenda? The items?
Someone promised me a safety report at some point.
You'll get it at the next agenda. You'll get it, then.
Thank you very much.
Anything else to executive meeting?
Very short.
But you always-
They always are.